Hey gang. Green screens are down. Lights are off. Howard Stern costume put away. Video figured out. I want to let you know that this interview took place this past Friday. The Friday before Halloween. And due to some technical issues, I couldn't get it out sooner. My goal was to have this out much sooner. So that the entire community, not just the supporters, but the entire community can review the information. I welcome all candidates for Boyertown School Board. To call me toll free. At one is a real easy number. If you don't call, I can't help you. One triple eight. Eighty-eight. Yergz. Just like you see it. At Yergz Radio. And just like you see it at yergz.com. Y E R G Z. One triple eight. Eighty-eight. Y E R G Z. I hope to hear from you. On Thursday of this week. November 2nd. We do have some other candidates. Don't have the email in front of me right now and it's late. In fact, it's now November 1st. My 52nd birthday. It's no longer Halloween. But tomorrow, Thursday. Michelle, I don't have her last name handy. Will be joining. On your end, I think also Lisa. Both from Boyertown Forward. Were both candidates supported by Boyertown Forward. Will be on Yergz Tonight. My daily radio show. 5:30 PM Eastern. You can call that same number. And talk to them. If no one calls, I'll still have plenty of questions. And that is also when we will record. The next episode. In this series of interviews for Boyertown School Board. If you have any contact with any of the other candidates. Please forward that information. And know that I welcome them contacting me. I've tried to contact them. And as we said in the federal government and report writing. Met with negative results. Thanks for watching. Again, welcome to another video where today we're going to take a look at an interview that I did last week. With candidate for school board. Matt Hook. It took so long because there were some technical issues with merging. My camera shot with his camera shot into one video. And so what we finally figured out on how to do is instead of trying to show you just the entire conversation. I would do a video like this as a commentary showing you the clips to the answers to my questions. There are some times in his answers where he pauses. That is because we're having an actual conversation. And I interject something into the conversation. So he stops for a second. The audio track that goes with his video is just his audio. So you don't hear me interjecting. What I'll do is point out those times and let you know the general gist of what was discussed during that brief second or two. I want to thank Matt Hook for joining us. My first question was how he relates to the job of school board director and what he brings to the job. He feels that public education is under attack from both the right and the left. Ever hear that before? He won't be bringing a demanding attitude to the position. Like he knows everything. But he does have expertise and won't be afraid to share it. Let's let him do just that.
Uh, yeah, I'd say. I think that it feels like for me like um. Like public education is under attack, but for for very specific set of reasons and one of them. Being uh, something that I connect to which is social emotional learning. And that certainly, you know, because I'm sort of in the tier three, you know, the students that need the most of the most. Social, educational, psycho, emotional, all that stuff. That's where I am. That's where I live. But that's not a need that only exists in some. In some like weird world that's contracted through the. Through these educational agencies. It's it, I mean, mental health exists for all of us. And my role, I think, like one thing that I would like to like at the very least, if I can. Increase public awareness, but not only that, but but increase public understanding. So I feel like a lot of the. The role of mental health in the schools is being misportrayed and mischaracterized and. Just putting it like, I don't like the um. I don't like all the attacks from the left to the right and the right to the left. I like to and I also don't want to come at it from the perspective of listen, I'm an educator and. This is what's true, but I do want to approach it as in, you know, this is what I've learned. I've been in this field for a long time. I do have a specialty. I've worked with a lot of other people that have specialties. And you know, there's never been a classroom that I've taught in. And I've been in a lot of them or even, you know, consulted in. Where there is education happening where the emotional needs of the students aren't met first. And I think that's something that everybody needs to really understand. That doesn't mean that there's, you know, that doesn't mean. That people are flawed for having mental health needs or. Uh, yeah, I think it's just, I think, and it's part of it's like, there's less stigma surrounding mental health, even still in this year. Uh, so hopefully one of my things that I can help. Help with in the process is just. Increasing the amount of public awareness, decreasing the mass stigma. Facilitating some of that programming even in our own. Uh, in our own district.
So with that, I got into some of his individual skills. Such as communication and what he would do with it. He said he would be able to deal with the bad faith actors. His words. I think it's a pretty good choice.
You know, I can, I can connect to people. I can, I can talk, I can explain things, you know, hopefully. Not everybody will want to hear it, but hopefully I can explain things and in a way that makes sense. Um, I know a lot of people have told me there are a lot of bad faith actors. And I know that I can connect with people in dialogue. Maybe even at the school board level and have conversations about, you know, what some of these things are and are not and. Uh, it's hard to, it's sort of an uphill battle when, you know, there's an organization like Moms for Liberty, which really isn't even an organization, as I understand. It's just a. An offshoot of a much larger. Campaign.
So he's begins to identify some of the issues. I ask how he's going to deal with them. He then goes on to identify some of the inaccuracies. And outright lies that need to be addressed. He concludes though, that he's got hope.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. I believe in building relationships. I believe in talking to people. I'm not, I, I don't, I mean, people are going to be listening to this right now. Like, I'm not trying to manipulate anybody. I, I want to actually present because, because I think what's happening is that there is a lot of demonization. And I think it happens at both ends. And you know, people may think I'm the devil right now. I don't know. I've heard some stuff about, you know, just there. There are people on the left that are representing Satan. And I want people to understand like my intentions are good. If I can. If I can portray what it actually is that I do. And people can see. The, the space that I come from. Then hopefully people can get a better understanding of what it is, you know, that, that we do in some of these programs. And I do it like I have heard things said by some of the people on the board, like they believe in mental health and they do understand why. You know, these kids have some, some of these kids have real mental health needs and they aren't totally against. You know, so I know that there are varying levels of beliefs, uh, and I, you know, I would meet anybody where they're at in any conversation.
So with that, you see he's about to crack a smile. I reminded him that there are no polls being taken for how the school, the community portrays. The current school board candidates. So I asked him, what is the community saying? And what kind of progress did he feel that he made since he began the campaign?
We were on a float and we went through the. Yeah.
This is with the Boyertown Halloween Parade.
And we, we like. We had a, we had our signs on the side of the float and we had. You know, some of our perspectives like no book bans and no more school cuts and. Um, I was interested to see like what our reception would be. And I wasn't sure what it would be before. That and after it, I felt pretty good. I felt like, wow, there were actually like a lot of people. That seemed pretty supportive and to me like those are. Those are sort of lightning rod issues, but they're also. The two most important issues, I think, in, in what we're doing right now and. There was a lot of head nodding. There were a lot of people smiling. So. That definitely had me feeling pretty optimistic. And just day to day, I guess it's harder for me to get a sense. But in some of those events, like I've had a lot of good interactions. I've definitely met like a lot of good people. There are definitely a lot of people on our side.
So my next question was. We had realized that there was an income deficiency in the current tax structure throughout the Boyertown School District. So I asked him what had been done to regain. Past income that was lost by the school board for not raising or assessing proper taxes. Also, how would he return to providing an actual education to the students in the Boyertown area? Here's what he had to say.
Not much has been done. I mean, it's, it's going to be 3% again next year. A lot of the damage has been done because of previous years. Them not budgeting for where we are right now. So a lot of the things that we should be able to afford right now, and really you, you put your, you put your finger on it. It doesn't. It doesn't seem like we're able to afford a lot of the stuff that a lot of the other local districts have because. We didn't plan correctly and. And they, they praise a lot, a lot of the people that are on the current board praise themselves for their own planning because. They've saved tax dollars, but meanwhile. Our schools are. We're, I mean, we're really to the point where we're, we're underfunded. We have, we have uh. Situations where the students don't have substitutes in certain days or being warehoused in the cafeteria. With a moderator and just like hundreds of them. And this is a class period. There are times where, you know, they're. They're eliminating staff with attrition. And they're not refilling those spots and that's. You know, my understanding is that that was planned. This is like, you know, we're going to plan to. Let these teachers retire and age out and we're just going to have fewer teachers and we're just gonna. You know, we'll deal with it because that's fine, but it really isn't. I mean, knowing from, from my perspective, a classroom of 28 kids is not the same as a classroom of 31 kids. And that's where they're headed. They're headed to 30, 31. Um, you cannot, it's, it's not the same. Every kid that you add into a room changes the dynamic of a room. And, and every staff that you have in a building makes that building better.
So then I asked what we're missing. And what is the progression? To the downward spiral, but also. To get some of those missing items back.
Ultimately, if you're in a reasonably good district like we're in. The fact of having enough staff can't be understa- I mean, there's really nothing that you can do in a school building if you don't have the resource, you don't have enough resource. You can make every plan in the world. You can have the best plans. And if you don't have the staff to follow through with it, if you don't have the resources, it means nothing. But that's where we're at. We're at the point where we're scrimping and saving and we don't have enough and um. You know, it's real, and it's only going to get worse. You know, we're putting more of the same. It's just, but this time. In the next election, if this is where we're at with another, you know. A board overrun by M4L candidates and people that haven't planned well, we're going to be. Needing to let go of so many, there's going to be so many angry parents and a lot of the local parents, I don't even think realize it, how, how bad it is going to get.
So I asked him. Has the media covered some of these losses? Or aspects of the campaign? And what has Boyertown Forward done to help get the message out? To particularly the citizens of the Boyertown School District, but also community members elsewhere. So we can also talk to our families about the issues. At the end of this question, he lost internet connectivity. So a couple of minutes after. We were able to gain regained connection with uh, his internet. So during which time, as I'm switching from this video to the next one, I'll also tell you about our sponsors. Here's what he had to say about the media.
Yeah, it's. That's a great question. We, we've done a lot. They, they have been. They've been up to as much as possible. I mean, the more support that we can get from. Local um allies, you know, this kind of a thing is great and you know, we definitely appreciate this because the more we can get our voice amplified. The, the easier it is for us to reach more people because I really do. Feel strong, you know, we were at a meeting last week and I said, I really feel like. You know, the, the election could come and go and a lot of the people that. That really stand to lose or, or gain the most. From having some of us in office have no idea that we're even. Out there and I don't even think it's any of our fault. It's just like, we don't, it's, it's hard to have enough support. It's hard to get people to care. But the like, like the more that we can, the more signs we have out there, the more podcasts. The more publicity, the more events we can do and we're definitely ramping it up. I mean, we have, we have a. The whole slate of stuff that, that we're planning on the next few weeks to do as best as we can to. Get the message out, but it's, it really is, uh, it's like an all hands on deck situation.
So that's, I guess we'll call it the first half of my conversation with Matt Hook. Right now, I want to remind you about our sponsors, aromabypeter.com. Aroma by Peter is where I get my scented candles. And before you go saying that's gay. Or that's too faggy for you. Right now. I'm burning a candle that smells like leather. So imagine you're sitting back watching a football game in your nice big leather couch. Or faux leather, but at least the room still smells like leather. Also, Peter has his fall line out. Take a look at the fall scents, you know, like the, I don't know, like cinnamon and whatever the hell he's got. And also his holiday line. Christmas stuff. And for you ladies out there, there are some even nicer scents than that. Check him out at aromabypeter.com slash Yergz. So that he knows I sent you. Also, limitbreakdigital.com. Limitbreak, B R E A K. Digital.com is where I get my websites made. Yergz.com is a website that I could not be more proud about. Well, actually I could. In fact, for our almost three month old website, we're already about to introduce version 3.0. I get compliments on this website all the time. And yogergroup.com, the parent company, right now is focusing on the hospitality side of my businesses. If my hotel that we're about to break ground on in Belize. Is half as sexy as what Jay made my website look like. All stock photos and the website says that. I'll still have a damn nice hotel. And I'll be broadcasting from there. With Rome instead of the coffee that I'm drinking right now. So check out yogergroup.com. And yergz.com. And then go to limitbreakdigital.com slash Yergz for 10% off your project. He does web development, graphic arts, search engine optimization, marketing, you name it. That 10%, he was going to give to me. I'm having him give it to you. So go to limitbreakdigital.com slash Yergz. To start your web project. Next up. Couple of minutes after we disconnected, Matt was able to reconnect with us. And I flat out just simply asked him. What does the future look like? Let's take a look.
Yeah, and people can say that's conspiracy theory, but you know, the, the fact is, the more you say, okay, we'll just use attrition to. Uh, manage our budget. We're just going to not have science labs anymore, which is really what's going to happen in Boyertown. Not going to have science labs anymore now. You know, every year, more and more decisions are made like that. And it's not, this isn't like. This isn't fantasy. Within five years, we'll be a district with bare bones. The kids aren't getting enriched. Kids are going to care about school less and less because the less enrichment opportunities they have. The less invested they're going to be. I know like what people around the county say already.
At that point, I asked. What is the status of the school district? And what has his current job enabled him to learn? There's a pause here. Here's one of the spots where we're actually having a dialogue. And that's, you don't hear that because again, my audio is on another track.
I know like what people around the county say already. About Boyertown and it's not flattering. The closer you get to Philadelphia, the better the districts are. And it's objectively true. Yeah, it's objectively true. And you know, that doesn't make me happy to see that. That's, it's embarrassing for me. And the more, the, but the, the more you go out to those, just, you know, they have full day kindergarten. They have multiple. Science labs, they have planetariums, even, even a district right, right next door to us has a planetarium, but we don't have a planetarium anymore.
So at that point, I asked him, what are the teachers saying? Primarily teachers from around the outside of the school district, around the rest of the counties. What are they saying about Boyertown?
Claim that they're saving us money, but really what they are is they're driving our district into disrepute. They're making us look embarrassing all around the county. Um, you know, and I hear that because I work at an intermediate unit that serves all of these districts, all of the teachers all around and. A lot of like, I, I know what teachers around the area are saying too, is the other thing. Teachers don't want to come to Boyertown. That's the other thing. That you're driving teachers out of the profession, record numbers. And you're making Boyertown look worse and worse. So even the available teachers that are left. The best ones, they're not going to come to Boyertown. They don't want to come to Boyertown because they're afraid to. They want to feel supported. They want to feel like they're valued. They want to feel like their administration is going to bat for them and that they have the resources and they have the school board. That's going to support what they're doing. So this is why it's scary for me. Because it's like, you know, this is where I live. I don't want this to happen to my kids. My young, my older guy is safe from it, but my younger guy, he's not.
So from that, we start talking about taxes and the quality of the education. He'll soon get into the bad faith actors as well as some misguided and inaccurate outright lies.
And your point about the, the older residents, and I hear that about taxes, but you know, even within our county. This is true when it comes to districts. And how well they do and. How well the surrounding area will do. It draws people to the area that have money. It draws businesses to the area. People want to move to that area. Because they want to go to where they can get their kids the best education. And when people look at, and I. I think a lot of people know this already, but when people look at where to move, the first thing that they look at is, you know, what, who has the best district? And how much is it going to cost for us to go there? And that's, we, we want an area that's thriving. We don't want an area that's just going to. To turn into a ghost town.
This is where he begins talking about some of the bad faith actors. Doesn't name any names, but I think you know what he's getting at.
So we're just hoping to reach as many people as we can with that. Message that people need to understand, like these candidates that are running against us. You know, some of them may mean well, some of them are good people. Some of them are bad faith actors also. And they're not going to represent the interests of this community.
So here's where he then addresses the misguided and inaccurate statements. As well as some outright lies.
Well, you mentioned one is that we're trying to. Convert the kids to this or that. Um, is nonsense. I mean, the one idea is that the SEL curricula are. Are trying to like convince the kids to think and. And feel a certain way and to, I, I think that I guess the concern is that we're going to. Make more and more radical Democrats. Like that's what it seems like to me. Um, but I think that they portray it the way that you described where. A lot of us are. Are like the devil. That we're, we're evil and it feels like, you know, when I hear them talk. They seem very, they seem like zealots. They seem like they're in a cult. And it looks like they're trying to lead a holy war. And it feels scary to me to see them acting like that because, and I mentioned earlier, like I. I'm a human being. I mean, there are so many kids that. We've helped in our school. Go from, you know, they, they literally want to kill themselves. And uh, you know, we teach them how to face their emotions. How to make choices that are in the direction of their values. We teach them how, we teach them sometimes like just how to form values. Is, what is it like? Can I ask you a quick question?
Here's returns it on me.
Wonder, because I know Moms for Liberty kind of came from Florida, right? And do, are there more and more people in Florida that are starting to say? Like, are there some people down there that are getting wise and like, hey, we've been like the wolves pulled over our eyes?
So. Fair question. And I'll gladly answer it. It's why I don't endorse any candidates. However, as I've said throughout episodes of Up the Middle. Episodes of Yergz Tonight. Episodes of Both Sides Now. While I don't tell you who to vote for. I provide to you all the facts as I've just done. I will tell you who I would not vote for and why. Moms for Liberty is a fascist organization. They are actually an organization and they are headquartered down here in my area of the state of Florida. They recently had a meeting in Philadelphia. That met with large numbers of protesters who know what they're up to. And that's part of my mission is to help inform you as to what they're up to. Which is why I've done one video back in season one of Up the Middle. And just last week, released some additional information. I've seen the unkept promises of candidates that were represented by Up the Middle. I've seen right now throughout my neighborhood. Fallen real estate values and the disappointment of the real, upon the realization of those fallen values. As of this taping. More than 200 listings in the one square mile that is my neighborhood. Are for sale. Just tonight, walking my dog. A good friend and neighbor listed his property as well. As for banning books. I've walked the halls of one of the local high schools. There were no pornographic books in those crates. Large crates like you would see harvesting fruit in Frecon Orchards. Large crates of books. About Harriet Tubman. And the Underground Railroad. Jackie Robinson. From Major League Baseball. Now how is a baseball town like Boyertown? Supposed to accept that? Actual history. Is being changed. But then there's also the racism. Within one mile of my house. I know of at least two Confederate flags flying. Change that to two miles. And the number grows exponentially. But there's also the secret handshakes from within the white supremacist organizations. And let's not talk about the plenty of ignorant. And let's not talk about the plenty of ignorant social media posts. There's also the raised taxes, done so to compensate for deficiencies such as the poor schools. That is where Boyer Town is heading. And that is what I'm trying to help you prevent. So whether you consider me from the right or the left, know that I have tried to reach out to candidates being represented, endorsed, sponsored, supported, whatever the verbiage is, owned by Moms for Liberty. No one, as of Halloween night, has returned any of my calls. We remain Up the Middle. Thanks for watching. Thanks for watching. Welcome. Let's take a look at Matt Hook. Let's begin with Matt Hook. Switch the video. I am going to have a really big drink after this. Let's begin with Matt Hook. Should probably tell you what the first question is and we'll start. Three minutes, one outtake. I want to thank Matt Hook for joining us. Here he is.